Okay, I believe we are at our 9:15 agenda item. Public hearing, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of an ordinance amending sewer use ordinance, Appendix A, of the Lake County Ordinance Code, increasing sewer use fees for the Northwest Regional Sewer System. And we have Director Borey. NT?
Good morning, Board and staff and community. This is a special district item. I am Robin Borey, your new special district administrator. And the first item, we have three different rate studies today. The first item is on Northwest Sewer and the Prop 218 process and the rate study that we have done. And I would like to turn this over to Allison. She's our rate consultant who's going to give us a presentation on the process and the rates specific to this district. And as we go through the other ones, we'll kind of explain the differences between them and why some have a bigger increase versus others who have had annual increases. And so we'll try and explain some of that difference as we go through them.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. So my name is Allison Lahovitch. I've been the rate consultant for the Northwest Sewer System, Kelseyville Water and Sewer System, and then the Spring Valley Water System. So we'll start with the Northwest public hearing, but I'll give some general commentary about how rate studies are conducted and the legal requirements under Proposition 218. So that commentary will apply to all the public hearings for the rates today. So we have been working on the rate studies for over a year. I started in July, so it's been a very comprehensive process. And the overall goal of the rate studies is to bring the rates up to the cost of covering service, so covering operating costs, capital costs, so that's renewal and replacement of your infrastructure, building up adequate reserves, so making sure we have some cash in the bank for emergency repairs, and also modernizing your rate structure, so more fairly recovering costs from customers based on how they take service. So the legal statute governing utility rates is Proposition 218. It provides a lot of rate payer protections. So rates have to be fair and reasonable. They have to be based on actual costs, so they can't be arbitrary or capricious. And we can adopt rates over a five-year period with a single study. So this is a package deal. It's a five-year rate plan. And at the end of five years, the county can evaluate the rates for the different utility service areas and decide at that time if rates need to be reevaluated. There are also procedural requirements. We've conducted a rate study to demonstrate the cost of service. We've mailed a notice to all property owners describing the proposed increase and their rights to protest the rates. So if more than 50% of affected property owners submit written protests by the conclusion of the public hearings today, the rates cannot be adopted. But absent a majority protest, the rates can be adopted according to the five-year plan in that hearing notice that we mailed out. If we could go to Slide 4, that would be great. Thank you. So for Northwest, the rates have been increased annually by the Consumer Price Index, so there was a rate adjustment in January. But despite these small inflationary increases, there is a bigger jump in rates needed to collect additional revenues. We want to make sure the sewer utility is covering its annual budget, so operating costs, fund infrastructure. So the county has been very fortunate. I understand we've collected some grant revenue to fund most of some emergency generators, but there is a small portion that has to be rate-funded as a match to the grant program. So there are cost-saving measures that the county has undertaken to avoid some costs placed on the rate payers, and that is that grant funding. And then we want to maintain emergency reserves. So kind of a brief, extremely brief overview of how sewer rates are calculated. So we determine the overall revenue that the utility needs to collect. And then for sewer rates, we look at the flow, so that's the amount of sewage people are discharging into the sewer system, and the level of pollution. And so those are indicators about how they use the sewer system and the level of cost it takes to serve each customer. So that's how we proportionally and fairly allocate costs to the rates. So there is a proposed rate increase for the different customer classes. Some customers have more of an increase. Some of the classes actually have slight decreases. And again, that evaluation was based on flow characteristics, how much they're actually using the sewer system. So the typical single-family customers bill for bimonthly, so it represents two months of sewer service, is increasing from about $68 to about $80. And then an additional 10% increase proposed for July, and then small 3% inflationary increases, three Julys, each July for three years thereafter. And I know that that's a really small text, so I do apologize for that, but all this information was also included in the 218 notice that everyone received. So I know it's small, but we all have that in the public noticing that was mailed out. So the procedure today is to open the public hearing, receive verbal comments and written comments. At the close of the public hearing, we'll tally those protests. And if more than 50% of the property owners in the Northwest Service Area have submitted written protests, the rates cannot be adopted. Otherwise, the first rate adjustment would go into effect November 15th. And the board then would have the option of increasing rates at the five-year schedule thereafter, up to the maximum shown in the notice that was mailed out. So that wraps up Northwest, and then I'll give additional comments for Kelseyville and Spring Valley later.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments regarding Northwest?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, just quickly, the 218 process was done for every district the same way?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Number one, I apologize. I just had a conversation with Director Borey this morning. I have not had conversations that I usually would be having on Mondays and typically be much better prepared with responses, but I feel like a rock and a hard place for the next multiple items, including this one, because we can't run out of deficit to the point that we can't afford to maintain our infrastructure, afford to pay the people that are servicing the infrastructure and the communities it serves. That is not something that I'm willing to put in jeopardy as we move forward. But I do have issues with the grander things, 218, for example. We get barely 30% of registered voters to vote on elections, and there's an expectation that 50% of all property owners need to step up and say no before something happens. Something is very flawed with that. It really leads towards an automatic yes. And so I think we need to dig a little deeper, knowing that not everybody is as well-prepared and astute and up to par on understanding this to really be able to submit their protest vote and things like that. I have concerns of the impact to some of the commercial establishments. There's already enough impact on our commercial establishments. I'm not certain what other commercial establishment specifically means. I'd like to better understand what that means. It seems like a very broad thing. And I know that some of these kind of, from at least looking through the documents, some of these kind of impact one another where it's not just one line because that's what you own. It might be multiple lines that come together because you have, like, for example, the trailer campsite, no, that's the wrong one, but you can have the additional toilets with commercial establishments on top of commercial establishments. I think there was a commercial establishment plus the restaurant and bars in addition to that as well. And so it's not just a one line and you understand what the fee might be. You really have to understand when making a decision today of what comes together as a full package and what is that impact going to look like. And I'm going to speak a little bit to some of the same comments that I would be making in the next ones. When I compare, and I get it, one sewer district has very specific needs, specific pipeline mileage, specific issues, age, all of these factors that fall into it. But when one community is paying one thing for sewer and one other community is paying a whole different price, I feel like we're not setting up equity in what the future of our development of our communities look like. Some will be more conducive to better development because the prices are lower, and some will not be because the prices are higher. And so I think 218 is probably one of the biggest issues I have today, where I would like to see us combining these districts so that we can have equity across the board where we're all seeing a more average cost when it comes to sewer, and I'll be saying the same thing for water. Very concerned for our commercial folks. I think the domestic, it sucks that it's going up, but the fact is it's still a low price in comparison to most other areas, so that's not my biggest concern. But I needed to express those things. The difference in how communities are, I don't mean treated, but it is treated in the sense that if I live here, this is what I have to pay to live here, really makes a difference in what we can expect to see from that community in the future. And I think we need to do better. We talk about equity, but this is a huge issue to me, and we're treating our communities differently, very differently. And I'm going to highlight that on the next ones. But again, rock and a hard place, just have to express myself. I know I have heard from some folks who said, please vote no on this. But unfortunately, I also don't want sewer spilling everywhere and having backups and all those types of problems. So I'm going to be quiet now. And if there's no further comment from board members, Supervisor Simon?
I would just comment, I think for my district, it's been the most recent increase that we just went through, and it was a large increase. You know, obviously, as we move through, when we talk about equity and setting up long-term vision for infrastructure, it is important as we're doing, and it affects all of us. You know, my bill just went up just last month, I think it was, because we are on the sewer system. But understanding the infrastructure needs so we can grow in the future, it is a hard balance. And come from the standpoint of not only paying a personal bill that's gone up, but also a business bill that's gone up, understanding the long-term implications if we don't make some of these decisions is really, could be just as negative of looking for the equity setup as we're doing these things. So it's never easy. I think each district, you know, making sure that you reach out, you have the community, Middletown Area Town Hall, community members, people going out knocking on the doors, I think is a real challenge sometimes, but doing it, fixing the 218 process, good luck. You know, so some of the things that are set up in government are challenging, you know, as we move forward, but going through this process and making the changes, I think, is for the long-term future of the county. This is how we do it, whether consolidation or other things are talked about. Yeah, I think that's important, but it is a process that is there now, and we just need to work as supervisors, as these things are happening, to have those community meetings, understand the challenges, you know, as we move forward. So I appreciate the conversation today. It is challenging, but making a decision, like I said, my rates just increased, paid the bill last month, I think, or this month, whichever it is, comes in, so it did go up. But that gives us, you know, as we always say, taking care of the lake around the lake and everything that we're doing, each one of these decisions, we have to keep that infrastructure growing because we've got to get everyone on sewer eventually here. We've already talked about the Full Circle Project and other things. Our most valuable asset that we have in the middle of it is that lake, and we need to always consider those things as we're moving forward. But it is a challenge, especially with our seniors, our people who are on fixed incomes. It does make it a challenge, but I think there are things that we could do in the future to help, you know, alleviate those if we run into issues, so.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Green?
I already talked once, so go ahead.
Supervisor Green?
Appreciate the conversation. Went through this with the City of Lakeport recently when I was still on council there. The pain points tend to happen when you don't do the studies timely, right? And if you're stacking up ten years of deferred maintenance and trying to figure that stuff out without having to set this five-year clock, in an ideal world, you bring this back more frequently and not less frequently. So on the specific issue of equity, multifamily residences, we're actually reducing rates there. So for those people on lower incomes living in multifamily housing, there's a lot to liken this to your thing about other commercial establishments. I did reach out because that kind of raised my eyebrows, but that addresses a single business type within my district, the winery. And as the consultant said, these are flow-based measurements, and so I'm very comfortable with the hike, and I'm not anticipating a protest from that particular rate payer. It's a mixed bag. You would say, oh, it's impossible to give 50% thing on a protest. And to me, like, that's a really good threshold, because we, on the one hand, state law, Prop 218, does require very detailed rate analysis. And to allow rate payers to basically have veto power over that analysis, you need a reasonable threshold. I mean, if you don't hit 50% of rate payers saying this is totally out of the realm, you would basically make all these rate hearings kind of very difficult to conduct. So in this particular rate study, I'm very confident that the numbers are where they need to be. I'm not getting sticker shock from that one particular commercial establishment, and I'm ready to move forward on this.
Thank you for your comment. Vice Chair Crandall?
I know on this one, there's different counts. So was there, the threshold, was that met at 51%? Or was, do we know that yet?
How many protest votes did we receive?
Yeah, we have to open the public hearing. And then people can, at the public hearing, submit additional protests. So the clerk has collected the ones that we have so far, and then any additional ones will be added to that list, and a total will be done at the public hearing.
Okay.
Two quick questions. The letters were sent to all properties within the sphere of influence or the district itself, or just to those that are rate payers currently?
The notices all went to property owners that, and then if somebody had a vacant property that did not have a water or sewer connection, then they don't get one. But everybody that is a property owner that has a connection got a notice mailed.
Okay. And then also, I believe Prop 218 prohibits us from having, maybe not prohibits us, but I just heard the other day from a different water district that Prop 218 prohibits like a low-income rate or something like that, that the Prop 218 process is to try to get the best rate that you possibly can for the needs of the system?
Yes, the rates have to be proportional to how customers take service. So you are not allowed to maybe place a surcharge on other customers to then give a discount to like low-income customers. You're not allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. And with that, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing and get any public input regarding these rate increases. Please come on up to the microphone. We'll start with the room.
Hi, I'm Anthony. I have a question, though. If somebody is like low-income, you don't get any discount. If they're slightly, like, between a one- and two-party household, and you don't have that much sewage, do you can't even base it off the water flow?
And at this point, that would be each house would have to be identified for each individual flows?
Yeah, it could be a little cost, not cost-effective financially, the fact each one be fluctuating. But what you said about having, even across the board for all county areas, using the sewer system is actually a good idea, because it saves you a lot on your bookwork and everything else, because it's a flat fee pretty much. And I have a question on the M, that's for multiple families, right? So if you have more than one person in the household, family member in the household, it's a little bit less than if you had one family?
So the residential rates are per dwelling unit. So if you have a single-family home but a lot of people, you pay the same as a single-family home with a small number of people. It's per dwelling unit.
Okay, so you can't all cram them into one place. You get two family houses, it's a little bit different. If you still have one system, you have two houses in one system, would that vary too?
It's per dwelling unit. So if your parcel has a main house and an accessory dwelling unit, that would be a single-family home plus a multifamily home.
So it'd be the M, then?
Sorry.
So it'll be in the M series, then, right? That's the one button below?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, gotcha. So I make sure on that. Thanks, appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thank you for your comment. Please come on up to the microphone.
First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I am a rate payer. Do you need my name or anything, or what?
If you are doing a protest vote, I think there's some official words that need to be stated, and your name and the location in the district, I believe, is an important part of that, too.
Okay. My name is David Ball. I live in Nice. My APN number is 032271130. And yeah, I'm protesting. What else do I need to do, or can I start reading?
Please start reading.
Okay. First of all, special district soliciting outside sources to do improvements, expansions, et cetera. I would like to know if a good percentage of the contractors are from Lake County and not out of county, out of state. Would nice to be keeping that big bucks in the county. That's number one. Number two, as of this year, we've had a 3.25% raise from 6602 to 6848, which is CPI very good. Now, here's, my problem is on November 15th, we're gaining a 17% plus raise to $80.20. And then July the 1st of next year, we're getting another 10% raise to $88.22 totally from the time of last year to now, or till July 1st, 2025. That's a 30% raise. That is almost considered usury. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything else that he needs to do to make sure that his protest vote has been?
He submitted.
He submitted?
Yeah.
Okay. So we already have something that you've submitted to us, so you're already on the list?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Did you have a question or a comment?
Do we want to address the contractor issue?
I don't think today's the day for the contract issue. I think right now, we're only looking at rates. I understand his question, but the agenda is based on rate increases and the study that was done. I'm going to check in with Mr. Guentavano if that's correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Please.
My name is Lynn Anne Orestano, 4088, Manzanilla Drive in Nice. Okay. First of all, I want to say I voted Democrat for President Joe Biden, who is going to pass an infrastructure bill that the Republicans stopped, unfortunately, that would have trickled down into this county to do all this infrastructure. Even though I'm on Manzanilla Drive, behind my house is the sewer easement where I park my vehicle, and it's my one way out for a fire, okay? If I can't get out, I die, you know, which we're seeing in Lake County. Very dangerous to live in this county. And the sewer easement is...
Ma'am, I want to make sure that we stay on the topic of the rates themselves.
Well, I'm protesting the sewer easements collapsing, the road that they put in for the sewer easement, and they're not fixing it. And I feel like if I'm going to...
I want to make sure that we're talking about the rates. If you want to protest the rates, please state that you're protesting the rates, but anything specific about how the services are provided or things of the kind is a different topic that I'm sure we would love to discuss, but not in this item today.
Well, it's a mixed bag, because I'll pay some of this money if I could get the road paved, you know, and fixed up. But the thing is, I pay the money and nothing gets fixed around here. So that's what I'm protesting. But if you're not going to pave the road, the sewer easement, so I could drive out of there with a fire safely without injuring myself and my vehicle, you know, I'm not going to pay it. So it's kind of a mixed bag, I guess, what I'm saying. I mean, I'll pay for these services if things get repaired in this county. I'm not going to pay money and nothing gets done, you know? Like, weed abatement doesn't get done, this doesn't get done, that doesn't get done. It's not right. So it's, you know, this is a hard thing, you know? I mean, I'll pay the money if you guys do things, you know, and get things done around here, but I'm not going to pay the money if nothing gets done. That's what I'm upset about in Lake County. And I feel like I pay a lot of money. Let me tell you, the house I own, the repairs and everything...
Let's stay on the sewer rates, please.
It's expensive to live here. So if you're not going to repair the road, the sewer easement, then I protest.
And I believe we have all the information we need for that protest vote to be written in?
No, I've not submitted something. I don't know how to do that. How do I submit something? Do I just sign some protest form, or?
So we need your name, address, that you protest, which you have, and then your signature.
Okay, so where do I sign?
You can even just write it on your protest paper there if you so desire.
Okay. I'll do that and give it to you.
And then you can hand it to Jesse, and she'll hand it to you.
Okay, do you want me to sign it down? We're sitting down.
I can help you read it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for helping her. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Please come on up.
Hi, I am Drew Perry, and I live on Robin Hill in Lakeport. And I do feel like the rates are a little high for single-family homes, because it's very difficult in the economy we live in right now to even put food on the table. And I don't understand where that difference is coming from with multifamily homes and single-family homes. I just, I guess, can I ask questions about any? Okay. So I wanted to know if things like the fact that we have to have our hydrants flushed so that everything that goes through that goes down into the sewer system, is that stuff taken into consideration when you go through those rates and like pollutants you were speaking about? Because I know we have to have that done quite a bit, because we don't have enough water being pulled up into our area. I'm just not, I think that you're underestimating the impact on families that are just trying to get by in this economy, that are doing their best to, you know, keep pollutants down, everything else, you know? I just genuinely do not understand how we could be, have multifamily homes going down by $2, and then everything else raised by nearly 30. That's nearly $180 a year that we'd be, at the end of this, that we'd be having to pay, and that's just something that seems really difficult for a lot of families. So I genuinely don't, I already submitted a written protest, and it sort of outlines a little bit more of how I'm feeling about it and how my family would be impacted. And that's basically all I wanted to say, was that I just, I want to make sure that that's all been considered, you know, because I know it's easy. We do, I do want that, all the things that need to be done, I would love for us to, you know, be able to take care of our sewer system. It's just I feel like it's not even. It's not something that's, you know, just, I just feel like it needs to be a little more evened out there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
I just want to check in and make sure we did receive that written protest. And it's okay.
Yeah, if I could make a quick comment. So you are correct, one of the proposed changes to the rate structure is to add that new multifamily category. And the reason I propose that is I know of another sewer district that got sued. They had a large apartment complex that had demonstratively lower flows, so lower level of service for their sewer on their apartment, and they sued this sanitary district, and they were victorious. So we know multifamily customers, so apartments, townhomes, sometimes senior living counts as multifamily, mobile homes, they use less water that is discharged into the sewer, less sewer flow, which results in a lower rate, because it has to be fair and proportional to the amount that people are discharging. So that multifamily rate is, you know, about 75% or so of the single-family rate. So we really did try to be fair and proportional to how people are discharging into the sewer system.
And as far as the, I don't think it's related, but they did, there was a statement made about flushing of the hydrants that goes into storm drainage, not into the sewer. Am I correct on that? Would you like to respond?
Well, it should be going into the storm... Well, it should be going into the storm drain. I don't know exactly where it's going, only being here for two months. But traditionally, when hydrants are flushed, they are flushed down the street, and they go into the storm drain systems, and not into the sewer system. And if they did go into the sewer system, it's clean water, so it really doesn't need to be treated. So that would not, we wouldn't charge for that. It would actually be creating less of a charge overall in the system versus, you know, a high-end user like the, you know, we talked about the winery. When special businesses like that, we have special agreements with those. So we have special agreements with the winery, because they usually discharge stuff that's higher in pH, and other things that need to be taken into consideration and cost more to treat that discharge than if a clean water was going in, and so...
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Please come on up.
My name's Eileen Dumont. I live at 5065 Lake Shore Boulevard, North Lakeport. And so my main concern is the difference in the single-family versus the multifamily rate increases. I wanted a better explanation of multifamily. I know you have to increase, but I just feel like the single-family is taking care of the multifamily people with the increased differences. So the math, to me, is unfair, even though you explained that. So I heard one person say, so if you have what some people call a granny unit next to your house, I call it a man cave in my situation, I'm being charged for a single-family for both units, always have. Now I'm kind of hearing that the other house or the other little tiny unit that hardly, no one lives there, hasn't, I'm being charged the whole 6848 right now, and I'm going to go up. It's not called multifamily. So is that? Is that something I need to come in and get changed, so that I get... I mean, I'm a senior. There's a lot of seniors in my neighborhood. Some people have one person living in their home, some people have two. But this is a huge increase as we go forward for people on fixed income. And now I want to know the better definition of multifamily.
So when we're talking about connections and being charged, it's based on if you have a connection. Some people have, you know, maybe that granny suite is on one water connection, and so it's all considered one unit. You can, you know, now with the new state laws, you could, somebody could build an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, a man cave, you know, a granny flat in their backyard. And it depends if they would be charged a multifamily rate for that, if they got a separate connection, or if they were all on the same connection, it would just be the single-family for the existing property.
Right. But if it's on two separate?
If it's on two separate, then you should come talk to us if you're being charged single-family for both of them, and we can correct that, because the additional dwelling unit should be multifamily.
Good. Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, at this moment in time, both single-family and multifamily are at the same amounts. If approved today, that's when the difference would take effect.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that. Any other comments from the chamber on this item? Okay, we're going to go to the Zoom room. Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention that I understand the restriction on establishing discounts for low-income people. But I live in a mobile home park. Mobile home park is owned by a company that is not even present in the county. We received no notice that this rate increase was going to be proposed, and had no opportunity to collectively speak to a property owner, to ask that property owner to address the rate changes. As an older adult, living in a small home, my use of the system is much lower than those of families with children and multiple adults. And so, you know, I know according to the law, you can't do anything about that. But the county has a lot of people like me, low fixed income people, living in mobile home parks. And I think that maybe there's, there needs to be some consideration, a grant program perhaps, that the administration could find to support some sort of a program to, you know, to provide a relief for those low-income families. You'll hear this all, I know you'll hear it constantly, but it is a fact in the county of Lake. And the county has adopted the Consumer Price Index for the Bay Area, which is much higher than the regional rural areas. So it hits us very hard. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you very much.
So I would like to clarify that mobile home spaces are per dwelling unit, and they're at the multifamily rate. So her rate will actually be going down versus a single-family because of the new calculations.
Okay. And just a quick question, based on the comment that was made, because there are individuals within the RV park. Is there a way to, within Prop 218, is there a necessity to reach out to the individuals within the RV park, or just the property itself?
We followed the, we sent the notifications to the property owners only.
Okay. And there is, if I'm looking at mobile home space based on the proposed bimonthly rates, please correct me if I'm wrong, because there may be some additional things connected to that, but it looks to me like it is decreasing. I don't have the percentage of what it's decreasing, but within five years, it still will have not gone back up to the 6848 that it currently sits at. Okay. Thank you. I don't see... Oh, no. Betsy, you still have your hand up. I want to make sure that you're done with your comment. Thank you very much. And I see that we have, I'm going to bring it back to the board, and Supervisor Green.
Just a question for staff, clarification. So one, just for the benefit of those here today and these other hearings, this is not so granular that you can get to a parcel-specific analysis, right? In single-family residential, for example, you may have an older couple living there, you may have a family of five, or six, or seven people, you could have a single caretaker, right? So when you're calculating rates, you do have to average flows, to the best of your understanding, across these various types. So I'm seeing nodding heads. That said, I do want to go back to the multifamily. Looking at the current bimonthly in this rate study, it was a general residential classification. So in fact, we are creating a new classification and billing on that basis. But it sounds like there was some interpretation that may have to happen on a site-specific basis as to which dwelling units may be eligible for what. And one thing I was concerned about that, we don't have to get to it today, is say you had an ADU on a single-family residential parcel, the implication was if they got a separate hookup, they would qualify for the new rate. Well, guess what? The new hookup is going to nuke any potential cost savings for doing that. So that's not the, that would not be an ideal solution to me. And then one protester was saying, I'm not getting the services, not necessarily in terms of the flow, but, you know, I'm not getting other ancillary services that I should be getting from this district. So I just want to highlight some of the limitations of the study. I get that not every single property owner in their given situation is going to be satisfied. But if you could, could you just highlight the difficulty of doing an analysis across the wide variety of property types and dwelling unit structures, and then slicing and dicing them into these particular categories?
Sure, that's a great question. So we have water, and we have sewer. So Northwest is only a sewer rate study, and there's not one water utility that provides water service to all the Northwest customers. So, you know, water, we meter it, we know exactly how much is going into each parcel. But folks, you know, have outdoor irrigation, they have other uses of water. We don't know sewer, we don't know how much is actually flowing into the sewer. Sewer is not metered. Sewer is a gravity line, discharging waste out of your house. So we have to use other types of metrics to estimate how much sewer flow is coming from different parcel types. And because we don't know exactly, because sewer service is not metered, we do use averages across different customer types. And so one question, a part of this study was, are the customer types appropriate, and do we need new customer types, or should we consolidate customer types based on industry best practices and the granularity of data, what we know about your landowners and your parcels? So for single-family residential customers, a typical usage pattern in your community is 130 gallons. But multifamily customers, it's only 90 gallons. So that proportion of 130 to 90 was how we apportioned costs. But you are correct. Northwest already has a lot of categories. That sewer rate schedule is quite long. Do we want to add more? Do we have information about all those different land uses? Do we want to distinguish between a bookstore and a gift shop? Do they have different uses? The management of information you have about those land uses gets really, really complicated. So we did use industry best practices to look at the categories for your different customer classes, and to fairly assign them, you know, flow estimates, understanding we don't have metered sewer usage. But we did use water usage statistics and estimated discharge rates for your community.
Appreciate the question. Vice Chair Randall?
Yes, on the letter, the fourth page, there is a statement at the end for Spanish-speaking households to call in. Do you have the number of how many folks called in and utilized that service?
Jesse, you want to answer that, since you're one of the translators?
I didn't translate for anybody.
On this one, or any?
Nobody called in.
Okay.
Microphone. I believe he said that he had no calls.
Oh, yeah, I had no calls.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you for that question. Quick question just came up in this conversation. How do you differentiate between an Airbnb and a residential?
If your county records show that that's a single-family home, then that's how we would count it in the billing system. And so some people say, well, my Airbnb is not occupied the full time, you know, 100% of the time. Why should I have to pay a sewer rate 100% of the time? And the county can't be responsible for how you use your parcel, how much it's occupied or not occupied. I mean, that's an incredible administrative burden to try and keep track of all of that. And I'd also really like to emphasize that the sewer system is there 24 hours a day to take your waste, whether you're using it or not. There's a lot of fixed costs to have that pipeline there, to have treatment available around the clock, 365 days a year. So we, in general, as a rate consultant, I don't recommend like vacancy factors for hotels, or Airbnbs, or anything like that. They should pay the single-family rate the same as other customers.
Okay. Maybe we'll disagree on that. I can understand the complexities of it, but when you have a large party coming in to rent one home, and obviously you're going to get increased flows versus your general residential use, there might be a burden that's not quite identified here. So, thank you very much.
And then the property sits vacant, too, for a month.
Yeah. And so we brought it back. We have closed the public hearing. I'd like to make a request of how many protest votes have been submitted for this specific district? How many have been received and approved?
For Northwest, we received 24.
Okay, so we've received 24. Oh.
25.
Thank you so much for helping her. So at this moment, we have 25. How many properties was this letter sent to?
It was over 5,000.
Move that microphone closer to you, please.
It was over 5,000. I emailed it to...
Okay. So at this moment in time, we're not close to the 50%. And did we receive any protest votes where there needed to be some clarification, or some issues with what was submitted?
Since we weren't close to the 50%, I didn't verify these ones. So these are unverified. 25 unverified protests.
Okay, so nothing was kicked out. Okay, thank you. All right, bringing it back to the board.
If there's nothing further, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, I move to waive the reading of the ordinance and read it in title only.
Second.
We good?
We good. What's that?
Do you need us to pause, Johanna?
I have it.
And so first, let's go ahead and go through the vote, and then you can read it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
So we have an ordinance amending sewer use ordinance, Appendix A of the Lake County Ordinance Code, increasing sewer use fees.
Move to advance the ordinance to the next available agenda for a second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
All right.
Do we need to, does that have to be a date certain? Just next available covers it?
Pastor Guintivano, are we good?
Do we have a date?
What's the next available date? Next week?
And does the motion as submitted work for putting it on that, or do we need to be more specific?
It should. So that would be October, oh, sorry, September 17th.
So we have, we already voted on that motion, and motion carries. Let's move on to our 10:00 AM item, public hearing, sitting as the Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three Board of Directors, consideration of an ordinance increasing sewer use charges and amending Section 1.1 of Ordinance Number 2652, increasing the water charges and fees for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
Good morning. We're still here. This item is different from the other ones, that this is both water and sewer rates. And again, Allison has a PowerPoint to go through the presentation on how the rate was conducted, and any differences from what we just covered on the other one.
Perfect.
All right. So I won't repeat myself on all the Proposition 218 legal requirements, just to keep us moving here. So Kelseyville has had CPI increases, so annual inflationary increases each January 1st. The last one was 3.7%. But it's the same story across all the utilities we're talking about today, where there is a need for a bigger increase to provide a catch-up, making sure we're covering the cost of service, operating costs, capital improvements, and maintaining reserves, as well as the financial health of the utilities. So Kelseyville Water needs a utility truck and well generators, so the rates are funding a portion of those items. And then sewer is a little bit worse financial shape, so we need rate increases to kind of correct an operating deficit. However, on sewer, sewer had a capital improvement fee, and we don't have like specific projects to assign funding for that sewer fee to. So the capital improvement portion of the fee for sewer is proposed to decrease, while the operating portion is proposed to increase. So it helps mitigate some of the rate impacts. And that, again, goes back to really identifying specific costs that the rates are funding, to be fair and reasonable to customers of how we're recovering expenses. So we are proposing some water rate structure changes. Part of the scope of this study was to modernize and update your rate structure to better reflect costs, but more fairly recover costs from customers, and to keep up with like recent court cases and legal requirements. So currently, Kelseyville charges a fixed fee, a bimonthly fixed fee, based on residential dwelling units, motel rooms, and RV spaces. And we're proposing to modernize the rate structure and convert to a fee based on meter size. That is the industry standard practice, that fees be based on meter, meter size. So larger meters have a higher capacity of water flow, use up a bigger capacity of your system, have a higher fixed cost structure. And so that is industry standard and a more fair way to recover costs. And then we looked a lot at the tiered rate structure. The current tier is zero units of water to 15 units of water are charged one rate, and then above that usage level, over 15 units per bimonthly period is charged... Your pumps have to work extra hard to move that water through your system. There's a lot more wear and tear. So we're able to assign those costs to higher, higher levels of use. But looking at your statistics and how your system is run, we're actually expanding that first tier from 15 units to 18 units. And then above 18 units is the new peak or overuse rate for residential, single-family residential customers. And then all other customers are proposed to rebuild a single unit cost for all levels of use. And again, these are based on actual costs to run your system and actual, you know, peaking factors and how customers are contributing to those costs. So next, next slide, please. Okay. So the rate schedule of proposed increases is the same for all the utilities we're talking about today. If approved, the first rate adjustment would go into effect November, and then followed by July 1st increases thereafter. And so again, this is the same information that was in your Proposition 218 hearing notice. So moving along, we'll talk about sewer. So sewer rates, the, you know, procedure and analysis is the same as Northwest. We looked at flow rates, pollutant loading factors, making sure we have a multifamily category. And again, the capital improvement fee is proposed to decrease. So even though operations and operating costs are increasing, the capital improvement portion of the fee is decreasing. So we provided a series of rate adjustments in the Prop 218 notice. The single-family rate does have a pretty significant increase, but that is, I'll show in a minute, the bill impacts, it's offset by the change in that capital improvement fee. So the domestic strength, which is the single-family residential fee, is proposed to increase from $44 to about $82. So very significant.
Can you advance this slide?
Can we go to slide seven, please? That's eight. Can we go back one? Thank you so much. So that is the schedule that was included in the Prop 218 notice. So it's a restructuring of the rates that first year, that November 15th, which is, we're doing a realignment of rates based on flow and loading patterns. So some customers get more of an increase than others, based on actual usage of the sewer system. And again, I'll show bill impact in just a minute, because we are decreasing another portion of the rate, which is the capital improvement fee. Next slide, please. And it is the same story with Kelseyville. You have a lot of sewer categories. You know, what is the granularity of data about types of land uses? We used industry standard estimates for flow patterns, because Kelseyville also has the water utility. We're able to look at water usage statistics, make estimates about the amount of water used and the amount of sewer discharged. So we have a little bit better data supporting the flow estimates for Kelseyville, just because we do have that water data available. Next slide, please. And then I wanted to illustrate that very bottom row, that capital improvement fee is currently $20.44, and that's proposed to decrease to only $3. So all customers pay that in addition to the other rate categories. And again, we just, we didn't have specifically identified improvements that that funding would be assigned to. And so we want to be fair and reasonable about identifying cost categories that the rates are going to cover. Next slide, please. So the next slide is an average bill for a single-family residential customer using 18 units of water. So that is the average usage. So the tiered structure is being reconfigured. The base fee is increasing. So this average customer is paying about $20 per bi-monthly period more on their water bill. On their sewer bill, the basic fee is increasing from about $44 to about $82. The loan fee is the same, but the capital improvement fee is decreasing. So the net impact on the sewer bill for this customer is an increase of about $20 as well.
Can you show the sewer slide, Johanna? Oh, sorry, it's down.
So, sorry, when I'm trying to reference, the bottom half of the chart there, where it says sewer charges. So the, where it says domestic strength fee, that's increasing from $44 to $81.49. The loan fee is the same. And then the sewer capital improvement fee is decreasing from about $20 to $3. So the net impact is about an increase of $20. So from about $78.48 to $98.49. So the water bill is increasing about $20, and the sewer bill is increasing about $20. Bi-monthly. That's a good point. Bi-monthly, so it's two months of service. Next slide, please. So to wrap up, we'll do the same process. I can take any questions or comments. We will hold the public hearing absent a majority protest. The rates would go into effect in November 15th of this year, followed by July 1st increases thereafter. And these are legal maximum rates, so the district and the county have the option to reevaluate your financials each year and go up to, but not exceed, the rates shown in the notice.
Do we have any comments or questions? Supervisor Pieska?
Allison, I just want to thank you for coming to the Big Valley Advisory Council a few months ago and explaining this. It is complicated with having both water and sewer, but I know we spent a lot of time walking folks through it, and they asked a lot of questions. And even though it's not the best news, they really had a clear understanding on what the need is. So thanks for coming to that.
Any other comments or questions? So I do need to make a comment. And again, I think I'm going to lead on the fact that 218 is, in my opinion, a, isn't moving with the times. And here, we're seeing, we're talking about Kelseyville. We've had a lot of conversations here regarding water and Kelseyville. And we're increasing our Tier 1 use, which I know you're saying you can't create tiers to try and hold people back from using water, but when you increase it, then you're telling people it's fine to use more water, because you've been using a whole lot more water. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, you would know better than I do, but the average two, single-family household, two adults, two children, use an average of six CCFs. That's the average, what I'm seeing across for like California and other places. Here, we're looking at 18. That seems quite an extensive use of water for a single-family home.
Okay, we have lots of comments. Very good questions. Okay, so like a six CCF, that would be like winter-level use. So the state of California set the conservation sort of efficient use mandate as about 45 gallons per person per day, and that really is only indoor use for basic health and sanitation. So flushing toilets, washing dishes, showering. And anything beyond that is discretionary use for like outdoor irrigation that probably could be cut back. So the average use statistic that we're using for Kelseyville is based on three years of data, and it is for two months. That's the other thing, is when we say like six months of, or six units of water use is the efficient indoor use, that's really for one month. And here, we're looking at, you know, two months. And it is over the whole year, both winter and summer, fall and spring. I mean, the other option could be we do seasonal rates, where you get less water allocated in winter and more water allocated in the summer, and how do we, you know, adjust or phase that in over the seasons? It could get really complicated. So we did look at an annual average, and again, it's two months rather than the six months of, or sorry, the six units applied to one month. This is average over the whole year for two months.
And I appreciate that clarification, that it is two months. And so the average I'm talking about is on a month, so it's more like we're talking about 12, potentially, give or take, depending what month of the year we're talking about. But it just feels like the 218 ignores some of the other stuff we work on.
Yeah.
So we're talking about a sigma area, which we're supposed to study and track on the relationship between surface water and groundwater, and what that water usage looks like. And we're increasing the tier to allow greater usage. And it just, when, as soon as I start comparing this one to the next item, this is where equity becomes a real issue in my mind, where their tiers are, granted, it doesn't have an extra cost on zero to four, or something along the lines, but then it's five to nine, and then it's nine plus. Here, it's zero to 18, and then 18 plus. And it's 50% twice the cost of water in Spring Valley than it is in Kelseyville, and it's a 30 to 40% change in the average household income between the two as well. And I just, I can't help but feel like 218 prohibits us from looking globally at what's happening in our area. And it also creates inequities and furthers those inequities with, between communities, not within a community. I'm not going to say no to this, but I have to highlight the problems that are, in my opinion, just bright flares of what is, what is wrong with one area who has less household income, that has to pay twice as much for life-giving water. I get it, the system might be more difficult, but there's got to be a better way to do this. And so I'm going to offer some options in the next one, but I needed to highlight the issues that I'm seeing, because this is not, we need to treat our communities the same, and this is, obviously, we're not treating our communities the same. And so I just needed to highlight that.
And if I could just make one quick comment about the conservation question. Hey, we're going from 15 units in Tier 1 to 18. Are we encouraging people to use more water? The tier breakpoint is expanding, but the price per unit of water is still going up. So every 748 gallons, that's 100 cubic feet, they're paying more per unit of water.
But it would have changed anyways, because whether it's CPI or whatever the cost of running a business, that change would have gone up. Zero to 18 was a decision based on the average use of that area, not because of other types of reasons. Supervisor Green?
We don't belabor the point. I just want to give a brief counterpoint. The 218 process cannot and should not be used to apply inequity lens, you know? It costs what it costs. And for us to attempt to revisit every land use decision and development decision for the past 100 years, guess what? Developments in some areas of the county with poor water and poor infrastructure was inherently going to be pricier than it was going to be developing water systems with more ample water and more infrastructure available. So it is what it is. Thankfully, we are just here to look at the rates and how the numbers crunch and what have you. If we were to take occasion to revisit the wisdom of those past land use decisions and attempt to apply some type of equity lens to these proceedings, I think it would make a already cumbersome process that much more cumbersome. So I thank you for the concerns, but I think they have to be addressed at other times and other venues, and not in the context of a 218 hearing.
But I'm complaining about 218, and it's a 218 hearing, so I think it fits within the context. All right. Let's open it up for the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item and submit a protest or ask questions? And if we can stop sharing the screen, please? Thank you. Please come on up.
Good morning. I just have, I would like to address the board. We, I noticed, I opened my mail, and I noticed Prop 218. And we, this weekend, we had a family gathering, and I asked my family about Prop 218. And they said, what is that? And I said, well, it's rate increase for the Kelseyville area. And they said, oh, we don't even know what that is. And I said, well, you need to read it, because it's going to be on the agenda on the 7th. And so what I'm getting at is that a lot of people in Kelseyville have no clue what Prop 218 is. I don't know if it was in Spanish or not, but there's a lot of Spanish-speaking people in Kelseyville. So that needs to be, I think it's very important that we're aware of that. And then the other thing is that renters can't vote. Kelseyville has a lot of apartments, mobile home parks, so all of those people don't know that there's, this is happening. They're paying a bill, but they don't get to vote on it. So my other question is, the 3% increase, I'm wondering if that's, 3% increase plus the CPI, is that going to happen with the rate increase? Is that what's the proposed rate, increasing it every year for three years, plus the CPI? Is that what you're planning on doing?
No, it's only the rate increase shown here and in the notice, so it's no additional.
So CPI is going to go away?
For this five-year rate plan, correct?
And then after five years, it's going to continue?
The county would reevaluate the financial status of the utility.
Okay. So I just wanted to address that and let the board members know that, you know, it's, people don't know about it, they don't understand it, and it would be great if, you know, there was a little outreach out there to just let the people know that this is happening. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? I see no one moving in the chamber, and no hands up in the Zoom room, and I'm going to bring it back to the board for further deliberation or action.
I just wanted to ask real quick, how many folks utilize the call-in for Spanish questions?
I didn't translate any for Kelseyville either.
Yes, please, thank you. How many protest votes have we received for this item?
There were eight for Kelseyville.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Green, did you have a question?
Just want to allow staff to clarify to the last speaker. I do see substantial increases in 2526, and I do see CPIs for the three years after that. So I just want to make sure we're on point and correctly indicating that the proposed action would in fact include CPIs.
It would include the CPI rates in 2627 through 2829, but at the end of the five-year rate study, actually in year four, we should be starting a new rate study, and CPIs won't continue outside the rate study. And we'll be coming back every five years to update our rates from now on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll waive the reading of the ordinance and read in title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
And be advanced.
Hold on one sec.
Oh.
We got to do both the sewer and the water separately.
Okay.
Which one did you do first?
There's two ordinances?
It just says ordinance, so I guess I need to amend it for ordinances.
Should we do two separate motions for each sewer and water, or one motion?
Your board can do two motions, two separate, for the, for each corresponding separate ordinance.
Okay.
I only see a single ordinance.
I will amend my motion to waive the reading of the water ordinance and read in title only.
And just for clarification, it will be the ordinance amending, although it will be present in title as well, Section 1.1 of Ordinance Number 2652, increasing the water charges and fees for Kelseyville County Waterworks District Number Three. That would be the ordinance that's in this motion.
Before we move on, I just want to check in County Council. I apologize, we moved fast. We already went through a motion and a second and an actual vote. Do we need to rescind that first vote?
Yes.
Prior to making any new votes? I just want to make sure that we're clean with what we're doing.
I move that we rescind the last vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Now we're clean.
I move...
No, because we rescinded.
Okay, and then we'll move on the recommended action by County Council for the Kelseyville water ordinance.
Nice. I need to hear the motion, because there's two ordinances we're amending?
Yes. So the motion for, the first motion would be to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only, and that ordinance being an ordinance amending Section 1.1. Yes. So, the motion for, the first motion would be to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only, and that ordinance being an ordinance amending Section 1.1 of Ordinance Number 2652, increasing the water charges and fees for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
And that was the motion that was provided?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I know that we did just read the title, but I think we're supposed to read it again.
Okay. All right, so, an ordinance amending Section 1.1 of Ordinance Number 2652, increasing the water charges and fees for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
Thank you very much. You want to do the motion to set it for the next?
Yeah, go ahead.
And so, the second motion for that ordinance previously mentioned would be to move to approve the draft, that the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors' meeting for consideration and possible adoption, and that date for further clarification would be September 17, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, you want to do the next one?
The next ordinance, it would be the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only, and that ordinance being an ordinance increasing sewer use charges for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know that that was supposed to be Water Works District Number Three.
Oh, sewer.
Just an ordinance increasing sewer uses charges amending Section 1.1. Just as a clarification.
Then it would be under that motion as amended, I believe.
It is all Kelseyville Water Works.
Okay, I apologize for that. My confusion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then the second?
Hold on one second, we're going to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's an ordinance increasing sewer use charges for Kelseyville County Water Works District Number Three.
And last motion?
The second motion would be a motion to approve the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors' meeting for consideration and possible adoption, and that is in reference to the ordinance previously mentioned relation to the sewer use charges.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. See, this is why we have to do this every five years, so we don't have to go through this process.
And also, just for the, just for further clarification, that next available Board of Supervisors' meeting, September 17, 2024.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, our next one is in 10 minutes. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we will reconvene at 10:45. All right, welcome back. Just want to ask everybody, please speak into your microphone. Some people in the audience are struggling to hear us, so let's make sure that we project our voice right into the microphone. We're going to take up item 6.5. That's 10:45 a.m. Public Hearing, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending Section 1.1. A of Ordinance Number 2945, Increasing the Charges and Fees for County Service Area Number Two, which is Spring Valley Lakes. And Director Borey?
Good morning, Board, community. And this item is another Prop 218 process to raise the water rates in Spring Valley, and I'm going to turn this over to Allison again. She has a PowerPoint specific to Spring Valley, and then we will go through the process.
Okay, real quick, just to put a break on that. Do we want to go through the whole presentation? Because I know that you've received a whole lot of, whether they're protest votes or comments, or just a whole lot of documentation. Do we want to, because there's talk about potentially having to take a break or a continuation in order to really understand what has been received and what the protest vote looks like? Do we want to move the entire presentation and the, this item to a following week, or do we want to go through the presentation and then just come back with how many protest votes we received?
I would like to have the presentation here. We have a tremendous amount of people from the Spring Valley area, and I would hate for them to have driven all the way over here and not be able to voice their opinion about this, as well as our consultant is here and has traveled to be here. So, I would like to go through the whole presentation, and then at the end, we probably will be asking for a continuance so that we can tabulate the amount of ballots that we have received.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and keep moving in that direction.
Great. So, I did want to make some introductory and opening comments. For Spring Valley, we, we met with the Advisory Committee multiple times. We gave pretty lengthy and detailed presentations to vet alternatives, review information, hear concerns of the community. They gave us a lot of input. We even revised our rate recommendations. So, we, we really tried very hard to vet all our, vet our alternatives to develop a rate plan that would be acceptable to the community. So, this is not coming out of a vacuum. It's not just me at my desk coming up with something and saying, "This is what you're going to do." We really very much tried hard to, to listen to the community and develop a rate plan that the Advisory Committee had direct input regarding. I also understand we have a, a number of, like, written comments and concerns. I wanted to just address all those in, in advance before we dive into the summary presentation. So, we received a few comments that the, there's a new, Robin is our new administrator, and there's also a new superintendent, and does county staff need some time to get up to speed with operations of Spring Valley before a rate increase is implemented? The staffing does not have an impact on the financial status of the utility. The, the cost of service and the financial status is the, the driver for the rate study. Individual staff members, you know, being new doesn't impact, you know, the rates or the financial considerations for the rates. We also understand people were concerned about Spanish translations of the notice. Again, we did put in Spanish the, the note on the, the notice that, "Please call the office and Spanish translation services can be provided." We got a question about the costs of installing services for previously undeveloped parcels. Rates cannot subsidize growth. New development has to pay its fair share as impact fees, connection fees, capacity fees to extend services to their parcels. Growth pays for growth. Rates, existing residents cannot subsidize growth. So, that would be a totally separate type of fee study for development or, or, you know, growth or impact fees. I understand there's concerns about leak credits. So, if someone discovers a leak, they rack up a huge bill because their water was flowing, you know, in a leak scenario, and how often leak credits can be processed, and what the, you know, scenario is for that. That's really a customer service level issue. We, of course, want people to address leaks and give a, a process for doing that, but that's kind of outside the scope of the rate study. We got questions about best practices and how often rate studies should occur. It's been a very, very long time for Spring Valley to do a rates adjustment. The last rate adjustment was in 2011, so it's been over 10 years. We do recommend the five-year Prop 218 timeline for reevaluating rates, but that is a, a policy-level decision. And Spring Valley does have property tax revenue that can be assigned either to roads maintenance or to the water utility, and maybe some of that, that funding was allocated over to water and kind of kept it going for some amount of time. But that money is not infinite, and costs have gone up significantly. So, we, we do, you know, as a best practice, recommend kind of keeping an eye on the utility financials and doing rate studies as, as needed. And then, I think the next few, or actually, all the rest of the questions are related to, like, financial reporting. The rate study uses all publicly available financial data, audits, so that's an outside auditor is reviewing, you know, all, all that financial data, and published budgets. I mean, that's all publicly available data. Most of it is on the county website, so anyone at their convenience can pull up that financial data, see what the utilities are spending the money on in, in service of customers. We also got questions about historical costs, so why certain cost categories like chlorine or other, you know, staffing or other things, how those costs have increased over time. Again, that's all audited information that's, you know, widely available to the public, and I've also included almost all that information as well in my rate study. Again, a public document that anyone can review at their convenience. So, with that, I'd like to start up the presentation. So, Spring Valley has not increased rates since 2011. So, the other utilities that we've talked about today have done annual inflationary level increases. That has not occurred in Spring Valley. So, think of any cost in your life that has not gone up in 10 years, over 10 years. It's extremely rare and unique situation, and so we are having to do a big catch-up to basically make up for lost time and make sure the utility is covering its costs. So, Spring Valley, as I explained, has property tax revenue, and that property tax revenue can be assigned to roads maintenance or to the water utility. And based on advice from the Advisory Committee, we are allocating a portion of property taxes to kind of smooth out our rate adjustments over time to fund water utility activities, but eventually, we want to wean off of that property tax revenue so that the water utility is self-supported by rates. So, then, proposed rate structure changes. Spring Valley has a base allotment of water included in the, the fixed fee, and then over that amount, it's a tiered rate structure. Currently, the bimonthly base fee includes 12 units of water, and as we discussed earlier, a lot of, a lot of bills don't even hit 12 units. Many customers never even are billed for that tiered water usage above the 12 units. We are proposing to decrease that down to four units, and that was a, a topic we spent a lot of time with the Advisor Committee regarding. Should no water be included in the base fee? Should one unit of water be included in the base fee? But the community felt strongly that four units kind of represented a super-efficient, like, base level of use, average use that was appropriate to recover in the fixed fee. And then, the new Tier One and Tier Two breakpoints, again, are evaluated based on actual usage statistics and the cost to provide service for Spring Valley. And I, I know there are equity issues between different service areas, but we had to only look at Spring Valley under Proposition 218, the cost to serve Spring Valley and the customer usage patterns for Spring Valley only. Next slide, please. So, I kind of described this verbally. So, Spring Valley customers are paying a bimonthly bill, so each bill represents two months of service. Customers pay $50, which includes the first 12 units of water. So, again, a huge, a huge amount of water is in that Tier One. Many customers don't even get a bill for higher levels of use. And then, that, the cost per tier, per unit of water goes up pretty dramatically, from $2.75 to $5.50 to $8. And if I had to guess, I would say that $8 is probably a conservation-based rate structure that doesn't have supportive data. Usually, when I see nice even numbers where it's like a even multiple or even increase across all the tiers, it's usually somebody said, "Oh, we want to charge more for higher levels of use. Let's pick $8." But under Proposition 218 and under recent court cases, it has to be based on a calculation of specific costs to serve higher levels of use. So, currently, the district is pulling a lot of revenue from Tier Four. We have some extraordinary, extraordinarily high-water users who are maybe, have some agriculture on their parcels that are paying a lot at that Tier Four rate, that $8 per unit, but that's, it's not substantiated by data. I can't, I, the, the cost data, the expenses do not show an $8 tier as fair and reasonable under Proposition 218. So, there definitely are some challenges with Spring Valley. Both the overall cost structure needs to increase, and then how we're configuring the rates has to really change as well to, to comply with best practices. But we are not proposing to change the capital improvement fee. That, that portion of the charge is proposed to stay, stay the same. So, this chart, again, is a lot of, a lot of small numbers, but this is from your Proposition 218 notice. The base fee is proposed to increase from $50 to $77.30 on November 15th, if approved. And then, we do have a series of rate increases thereafter. Some of the other utilities we talked about had just minor inflationary-type increases thereafter. Spring Valley really has a big financial burden to overcome, which resulted in year-over-year-over-year increases. The capital improvement fee is remaining the same, and then the tiered rate structure is revised based on actual costs and recent court cases. So, the first four units are proposed to be included in the base fee. Tier One is up to nine units of water, so that, that is like an efficient indoor usage for a typical household, and then above that would be like an overuse or peak, peak rate. Peak rates are assigned to costs, to recover costs, like, higher usage of, like, pumps and transmitting the water, so higher utility costs, energy costs to get the water to customers, and then additional, like, repairs and maintenance from that really intensive use at higher levels. So, next slide, please. So, here's a, a typical bill impact. So, a typical customer using 13 units of water over a two-month period, that customer is, the base fee is increasing from the $50 to the $77.30, and then the rate structure for the tiers is all reconfigured. So, currently, a customer using 13 units would only pay $2.75 for a little bit of Tier Two, or a little bit of water use, where most of that water was already included in the base fee. And the, the problem with that kind of rate structure is there's very little cost differentiation between a high-use customer, you know, somebody using five units versus 10 units of water is all of the base fee is still all paying $50. And so, conserve, you know, for a conservation price signal and for Proposition 218 proportionality, we want a rate structure that's more aligned with how people use water and they're paying for what they use. So, everything over four units of water is now billed, the, the charge per 100 cubic feet.
I'd like to add something to this. So, the average person or household in Spring Valley is using less than 50,000 gallons of water a year, and that's why this tiered system is different than, like, the lake port where the average person was pretty much in that base rate. There are about 68 identified residents that are using about 40% of the total water in the area out of the 500 people. So, there are a few that are using a substantial more, substantially larger amount of water than the average person out there, and so that's why we have the different tiered rates, and it appears to be such a drastic change. But we're adopting the tiers to be more in line with the average user versus the higher users that then would be, then paying for their additional water usage and the, the cost associated with that additional use.
So, under the, the bill impact here, a typical or average customer, so not, not those excessive users, but an actual, like, typical single-family home, currently is paying about $67.15 per their bimonthly bill, and that would increase to $124.33 for that bimonthly bill. So, that is a huge increase, and that is just the first increase. And each year thereafter, the board, the, the county would evaluate the rates and see if the revenues need to increase further as proposed in our rate plan. But Spring Valley is in bad financial shape. Reserves are expended. There's, there's not funding there if there's an emergency. So, what happens if there's a main break and you don't have the money to fix it? Are we borrowing from the county? Are we begging for grant money? What, I mean, what happens? We want to be able, when people turn on that tap, that you have clean, you know, efficient water provided to your households. Again, 24 hours a day at any time when, when people need to use that water. And then, the other question is, what if we don't pass this rate plan? The, Spring Valley does have property tax revenue. Okay, so we allocate a huge portion of that property tax, or potentially all of it, to fund water service, because we don't have rate revenue to fund it, and then all that money can't go to roads. And so, the roads would be, roads maintenance and repair would be delayed or, you know, foregone, basically, just to keep the, the water running through the tap. So, you know, we, we always have fixed, fixed-income folks. We have low-income folks. It, it's very difficult to, to have these significant rate increases. It's very difficult to have these significant rate increases. But again, just looking at the financials, that's my job to be the calculator, look at the financials and give you the honest truth about what's happening in the community, is that there is a tremendous need to increase rates. There are implications for the roads maintenance if there's no rate adjustment, and we had to comply with Proposition 218 proportionality requirements and identifying actual costs that need to be recovered in the rates. And the final comment is, you have not had a rate increase for over 10 years. So part of this, why it's such a high percentage, is that catch-up. 10 years of catch-up on the water utility. So we can go to the last slide. So we will tally the protests, continue to -- the next meeting, if appropriate. If there is no majority protest, the rates would go into effect November 15th, and then subsequent rate adjustments would go into effect July 1st of the following years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes. First, I'll just say that the Prop 218 process was put in place to limit the ability for local governments to impose taxes, assessments, and all of that good stuff. And so, you probably noticed on my previous votes, well, absent from the last, I was against it, and it wasn't because of the rates. And I don't think anyone that I've been in a meeting with when it comes to Spring Valley has been opposed to an increase. They understand that. It's the process in general. And so, a lot of the -- and the advisory board, I've worked with them since I've been on as a supervisor, and they're pretty reasonable, in my opinion. I've, at times, and I might get flack for saying this, but they're even more efficient than some of my town councils. So I'll give them a lot of props on that. They advocate. I know at times, it's hard to get people there, and that's just how all of these advisory boards are. But with regard to this, it was a very -- for me, I think one of the issues that I have as well is the Spanish situation. And I asked it in the previous, but I figured I'd explain it here, is I would have loved to see Spanish on the other side of the document. I understand that there's a minimum when it comes to Prop 218, but we can do better as well. That way, people understand better, not only that, but also, so if people do understand and they're not against it, there's no excuse, right? So I understand there's bare minimums, but we could always do better to make sure people understand. So a lot of the folks feel, you know, suspicious of this, and a lot of them, even when it comes to rates and the maintenance and whatnot, a lot of the folks are, in essence, not satisfied with that maintenance, if you will. So I think, for me, I would really like to see special districts and the advisory board work together, rather than push forward on this. I know we're probably not going to do that, but for me, I think it would be more ideal. This is all, I know you've read some comments to answer the questions, however, I still feel that it would really help, because I know that when it comes to the 40% that we talked about, the advisory group's willing to work on those situations as well. So, yeah, I just, for me, I have, in going to the meetings, and I also understand, too, that there was multiple meetings and discussions about this. I know with Scott Harder, Jesse was there as well. I just know, a lot of the folks that received these documents didn't really show up until after they seen what was proposed. So before that, they didn't go to those CSA meetings, so it might have helped if that proposal might have went out before, because that whole confusion with July 4th and July 10th, like, I didn't even make the July 10th meeting, because I'm used to it being the first Wednesday, you know, and that's probably my bad in general. But if I had an issue with that, I'm pretty sure that the community had that, and that's where they would have got a lot of their questions answered. So, yeah, I just, I have a lot of, you know, I understand the rates. That's 100%, I think everybody does, but at the same time, there's just some things that need to be considered when it comes to this. And so, when it comes to folks needing that 251 or, you know, that amount for the 51%, it's going to -- it may be close, it may not, but at the same time, there could have been possibly more folks. And so, yeah, there was a couple of people out at the CSA, when I talked to them, that said, "I don't even answer my phone, because I get hacked," or whatever. I get, what do you call that? Spammed and all that other stuff. But they don't come this way out to Lakeport mailing it. They don't even know if their mail came. You know, it's just a lot of those things. So I think, because this community is so far out, I think it's, for me, again, I would really love to see something, you know, formed to push this out a little further. I don't think having a no increase is ideal. We understand that. We know that you need the funding to operate, and so does the community. So I just would really love to see something where the community can work with special districts and have a more palatable, or even just understand better, in my opinion, so.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Green?
Question on the water rate study report, 27-page document. I'm looking at the last page, page 27. And it's just a list of figures, but if I'm looking at the right-hand figure, the percent increase, clearly, the lower the bimonthly water use, you're looking minimum 42% increase. You go up a little higher, it gets into the 80s. And then, as you go all the way down the page, say you were to have a single, large agricultural water user, anything above and beyond, say, 50, 100 cubic feet, basically, no increase, no effective increase on that. And I don't need to unpack the whole history of this district, but to have out-of-district customers, unusual, number one. To have a large-scale agricultural user and not have that agricultural use quantified here, I think, at least fully explored here, raises to me, in this case, an equity issue, because we have very clear increases called out for single-family residential, which is by far the majority of this customer base, but I don't have a clear understanding of agricultural water rates, and if there's any differentiation made or more to the equity issue, whether they're paying their fair share for the larger quantity of water that they're consuming.
So for the agricultural use, we actually have an agreement with all of our customers that the water is for residential use only. Nobody is supposed to be using the Spring Valley residential water for an agricultural use. And so, that's already in the agreement and would violate our water ordinance if they were using it for a substantial agricultural use.
And then, the bill impacts that you're referencing. So the issue is that Spring Valley's current highest tier is $8, and that was the one, there's not cost data to support an $8 tier. In my professional opinion, that's not aligned with Proposition 218 cost-of-service basis for the rates. I can't justify that high-level tier. And there was the court case, the San Juan Capistrano court case, which had challenged this very type of rate structure, where there's a high, like, penalty tier that's not based on actual costs of service. So what I suggest is either really coming down hard on the code enforcement, that somebody is using treated drinking water to irrigate plants that don't need highly-treated drinking water, that could be raw water or irrigation water. Another option could be, you know, pulling those customers off into a new rate category, a totally different type of rate category with additional analysis. But our, like, land use and, you know, customer data suggest that those are all single-family dwelling units. So clearly, there's a disconnect between what people say they're using water for and then what the billings are showing.
Put it another way, it's fair to say that a good chunk of this water could be potentially being used for outside irrigation, even in the single-family households. Thank you.
Yeah, so I've done a kind of a deep dive on water usage out there, and during the summer months, some of the parcels go from, you know, 10,000 or less per billing cycle to close to 100,000 gallons of water in a billing cycle. So you can see that there is a substantial increase in the billing month of June, August, and October. And October picks up September through October.
It must be growing some great tomatoes.
So this is the one, and I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate Prop 218 and its process, but this is the one that kind of hits me the hardest, because this one's kind of unique. What other water district has to take care of roads? We just --
It's the only one.
It's the only one. We have to, we go about our days, we pay our property taxes. Spring Valley pays its property taxes. We go about our days, we buy stuff, we pay sales tax. Spring Valley folks go around in their days and pay sales tax, but all of a sudden, they're the only ones that have to pay for a specific road within their water system, rather than this global, this global public works concept that everywhere else is. And so, I think that that creates some extra burdens on a specific community that no other community seems to be experiencing. And I, at this moment in time, I would like to, obviously, there's going to be a request for a continuation for the protest vote, but I just think that, are we just doing what we're doing, because we've always been doing it? Or can we review something and say, can we do it differently? Is there a different way to do this? Is there a way to split that out and make that be normal public works, where it's a road? It's not just water. Is it possible to consolidate with other water systems? I mean, I'm looking, and again, I'm going to use what we just approved. If you go to the maximum cost of 28, 29 for what was just approved for Kelseyville and what could be approved for Spring Valley, for 18 CCFs, which was the first tier only for Kelseyville, you're looking at a difference of $207 versus 92. And that is, to me, just way too large of a difference. How do we change that? I know you need the funds to be able to continue to work that system and have the infrastructure, but we don't have to be so separate and so siloed in our different districts that there's opportunities that maybe we're not taking up. And so, I'm looking at this and seeing extra burdens on a community, and how do we solve that? Not, is it a yes or a no? It has to be somewhere in that gray area. And so, I'd love to continue the conversation, obviously, learning how many protest votes are there, but just, I can't be comfortable with that kind of difference. Communities are community, people are people, and people need to have the same level of access to things.
Yeah, so--
But the systems are different. It's a different cost.
Yeah, but so, let me give you an example. I live in the city of Clear Lake. Golden State is about to consolidate with an entirely different county and a different area to, in order to hold and freeze our rates so they don't go up. There's something that can be done outside of just looking at district by district by district, and I think we should be talking about it, because we have areas that are, it is $28,000 to connect to this water district. It is $6,500 to connect to Kelseyville. I have to question why. Where's the equity in, a connection is a connection. It's not like you're building pipelines for them. That would be a whole different situation. And so, I just have a lot of questions as to why there's such a difference, and I can't help but feel uncomfortable with those differences. It's too far, and, again, looking for a solution, not looking for a no answer. But I would love to continue the discussions to see what else is possible, because doing the same thing over and over again, knowing that this is just going to keep separating and getting harder for some and not harder in the same way for others, is not necessarily a response to a future community, in my opinion.
Sorry, go ahead.
I understand what you're saying about the different districts, but each water district, you know, some are wells. Kelseyville has phenomenal water, so you pump it out of the ground and you put a little chlorine in it and off it goes, versus treating water coming out of the lake is a hugely different process, and it costs a significant amount more. Pulling the water out of the Cache Creek is also surface treatment, takes additional requirements. And so, and then, the thing about the property taxes, how they're paying for the roads, that would have been something that was established by the original development, and we can go back and relook at that, but that would be, you know, we would have to look at county-wide votes and stuff like that to change those items.
Yeah, and, you know, the Cobb water's been, Cobb area water's been through a significant consolidation after the fire, taking on all the smaller districts, even the small special districts, which I think was $30 at one point, you know? And they were really upset when they got consolidated into Cobb Water. When all the homes were lost, there were fewer users, and the users that didn't lose their homes had to pay a higher amount until other users have caught up. And because there's only a 20% rebuild rate, those rates are still higher. Those users have to pay for the system. The base rate up there is $168 bimonthly, which is higher than any of these today. So you have to look at the cost of the water for the users. And each district is very, very different, as Robin just said. And it doesn't sound like this conversation is ending today, which is good. And there's been a lot of input from the community, and that's great. But you can, but each district is very different, and you can't lump them all together.
And in addition to that, special districts doesn't control all of the water districts around the lake. So the ones in Clear Lake are, one's Golden State, and there's, you know, they're all private, or one quasi-private public entity. You know, there's, Clear Lake Oaks Water is another district.
There's over 90 water.
Extremely expensive. Part of it has to do with, you know, topography in this county. Kelseyville is relatively flat where we're servicing the area versus, you know, like, Clear Lake, you know, it's up and down and around. Cobb is up and down and around. But, so, you know, it's a big conversation. It's much more than just the Prop 218 for one specific district.
And that's exactly what I'm stating, that I'm not comfortable with the system, and I think there's other options, and that's all I'm stating.
Supervisor Green?
Just very briefly, for the benefit of all those assembled, including us, one differentiator is the amount of capital projects. So just like we haven't had a rate increase since 2011, looks like there's a big chunk of deferred maintenance. So just, can you give us the 30,000-foot, you know, look at the capital projects that need to happen, just to get you where you need to be, and maybe we can all appreciate that that's a major driver of the rate change proposed here today? And if it's not, owe you my words, but I saw a fair chunk of, I saw no change proposed in the capital improvement fee, and I saw a whole bunch of capital improvement projects that need to get lined up just to continue baseline service.
So the county is actually undergoing a five-year CIP that's going to be county-wide, which has been something that has been neglected. So these capital improvements are not identifying everything that needs to be done. This has been more of a capital improvement because we had line breaks, or we know we need a new well in this area. So we're doing a deeper dive, and probably by January, we'll have a better idea of how many capital projects are needed in each district. But these have been kind of reactive projects, so line breaks, we need to put in a new tank, money that we've gotten through grants and that kind of stuff. So it's not fully defined, and this money has traditionally been used for deferred maintenance or items that break that have to be replaced, like, you know, the main lines or stuff like that.
So in the fee structure, the CIP fee is for the reactive type of projects? It's not intended to address larger capital projects? It probably are needed.
Yes, and so, once the CIP is done, in the future rate studies, those additional projects would all be calculated into the projects, into the different rate studies. We do have, I don't know, 10-plus of other districts that we haven't done these on, and that we're going to get ready to do them, and then fold in the new capital projects into those districts as well. So in the next five years, we will have to identify, well, this is the projects we can do that we have identified that need to be done. We'll seek grant funding. By having a rate study, that opens up additional grant and loan funding that without updated rate studies, we aren't eligible for. And then, in the next five-year plan, after that, we will fold in the comprehensive CIP, which, water and sewer should be a look ahead. We have a five-year CIP that's, you know, the county normally will be doing. But on high-infrastructure items, we look at a 10, 15, and a 20-year program, too. Just the fact of, you know, a well doesn't last forever, so there's a lifetime on that that's outside the five-year plan and that kind of stuff, so.
So is it fair to say that in addition to the immediate goal of stabilizing the finances of the district and addressing the short-term needs, we need the rate study approval to position ourselves to address those next steps?
Correct.
And any delay in a rate adjustment would necessarily delay our ability to leverage those increased opportunities?
Yes, and we will, if this rate doesn't pass, staff is looking at option B, C, D, E, what our different options are. We may have to-- E, what our different options are. We may have to come back with an emergency ordinance to stabilize the district, because out of everything that this district has in the property taxes and everything, water is obviously the first and foremost item that we need to provide, and we need to continue to provide the, the amount of potable water that is necessary for a regular household. So we're, we'll, you know, if it doesn't pass, we'll be coming back with what our options are and what impacts this has.
Thank you. So with nothing further from the board, I believe this is the point where you may be asking for a continuation. I just want to make, I just want to make sure that, are we taking public comment for more protest votes on the continuation? Just want to check in with County Council, because sometimes that changes the type of public comment that we receive.
Yeah, so, so your board has that option of, if your board, if there is consensus to continue the hearing, to take public comment on that specific issue of the continuance. The other option is to proceed with, with public comment and, and any protest there from, keeping in mind that at the, at, if, since it's anticipated that this would be continued on to a later date, that on that continuance date, that there would, there may be other public comments that would be, that your board would have to consider another additional protest, because it's a continuation of, of, of.
So it would extend the protest deadline if we did the continuation. Okay. Well, I, I think, and I'm going to check in with Vice Chair Crandall, the people that are in the room came here to share and express either their protest or comments directly related to this rate, so I'm going to move forward with that if that's, if you approve of that.
I think it's fine because.
Oops, sorry. I think it's fine because I don't know who would be able to be here next time or not, if that makes sense, yeah. Okay. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. We'll start in the chamber. Please come on up to the microphone, and you'll have your three minutes.
Is that us?
And if you have not submitted a written protest, it has to be a written protest. Sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot, either Director Borre or Allison, if you can let them know exactly what's needed to be written so that we can officially receive a protest.
Okay.
Okay. Let's not speak out of turn in the public, please. Thank you.
Okay. So to have a valid protest, it has to be a written statement. There has to be some statement, you can just write, "I protest the water rates." So some written protest. It must include the name of the recorded owner, so it's a property owner submitting the protest, so please print your name legibly. Some identification of the parcel, so it can be your assessor's parcel number or street address that is receiving service, and then your signature. So those four items, as protest statement, name of the owner, identification of the parcel, and then original signature.
Thank you very much. Please.
So, my name is Helen Mitchum, and I own two properties in Spring Valley. I'm also the Chair of the Advisory Board for Spring Valley, and I've lived in the valley for almost 33 years. Hard to believe. I love Spring Valley, so that much is out there. The committee that we met with, that met with the consultant, was in fact our finance committee, not the entire advisory board, but that's neither here nor there at this point. I'm here representing the advisory board and asking that you, as the Board of Supervisors, set aside this requested water rate adjustment until a few issues can be addressed and mitigated. My comments are going to follow pretty closely with the comments you heard from the consultant, because I provided this information to Eddie, or EJ, sorry, the, our supervisor, and to Robin last week. So we have a new administrator and a new superintendent that you heard about, and we just think that a delay in this process might allow them to better acquaint themselves with the valley and its uniqueness. I appreciate the fact that Bruno called us unique. We think we're pretty unique, too. It will allow them to assess how they can look at ways to operate the system more efficiently. We believe the current cost to install a new meter, and you heard it was $28,000, and all the other fees should be reviewed and included in any Prop 218. The new meter is over $26,000, and we believe it should more accurately reflect the actual cost. This, along with our once-in-a-lifetime leak credit, might need to be reviewed. Many residents were unable to understand the letter defining the proposition because it wasn't provided in Spanish. I like the idea of one side English, one side Spanish. I have to do that for everything that goes out with little leaks, so I understand that. Should this notice have been sent to tenants paying the bills? I've read a couple of different approaches when looking at the Prop 218, whether or not it goes only to property owners, or whether it goes to the person who actually pays the rate. So that was a question that we would like to have answered. If a Prop 218 is recommended every five years, why really has it been 11 since we last determined rates? And how can we assure ourselves and our neighbors that future studies will be timely and thorough? Our finance committee needs more specific, timely reports. We've met with Robin and Jesse to kind of get that underway. We're interested in which expenses over the last five years really contribute to the shortfall. We all go to the grocery store, we all know that, but this is kind of like a different animal. We'd like to hear how much money is really needed to keep the commitment that water pays for water, which is a question that our advisory board has been working with for years.
Helen, I'm going, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Your three minutes are up. I want to check with Vice Chair Crandall, because I know Helen does represent CSA number two.
I think she's almost finished.
Okay.
I can go quick.
Okay.
Sorry. We'd like to know what the specific amount needed to bring our finances into balance and maintain it is. What is that as we move forward? We're all experiencing the sting of inflation, but the scale of this increase seems at odds with our sense of fairness. The average user incurs a significantly higher increase percentage than the user using twice the average. When 60-plus users out of 495 or so use twice the average, can they all be leaks? Are they really household users? Or do we have a problem with theft and leaks? The community would support an increase if it is fair and reasonable. We would like to hold on to our tax dollars to improve our badly deteriorating roads, and we can't do them if we're using water money. Therefore, we hope you will support our request to set aside this Prop 218 measure until the issues have been resolved. That's it. I have copies of this, if you need them, up there.
Please, if you can leave him, I think Jesse can grab him from you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very quickly, I've been requested to make the statement, just to clarify that the protests, only one protest vote per parcel can be counted. So it's not the situation where both a husband and a wife who live at the same house can both submit a protest, and that counts as two, because it's two people. It's one protest per parcel. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
My name is Martin Deesman. I'm, I've also been in Spring Valley for over 30 years. I want to speak quickly to the, the real cost impact to residents of Spring Valley. And the, the base I'm using for my costs is 12, 12 CCFs, which is a standard that we're living under right now. And the numbers I came up with were based on the table that was provided on page 20, on 27, looking at 12 CCFs. Want to talk about two things real quickly. One is a percent increase in the actual cost. If this person here spoke to inflation, I looked at the inflation rate, all I could go by is the basic inflation rate from 19, or 2011 to present, which the actual inflation rate was 35.5%. If, when I worked out the percentages of the increase over the next five years, what they're proposing is an increase at the 12 CCF rate would amount to 255%, which is significantly out of line with, with the rate of inflation rate that we've seen to date. So I don't know what they're looking at, and unfortunately, their site doesn't give their, their actual percent of increased cost percentage-wise, so I don't have a base for comparison there. So, I mean, that's, that's a significant difference. The other thing I want us to look at is our actual cost, based on 12 CCF. Right now, that would be $64.40. The next year, it would move to $120.21, then $140.40. By, by '28, '29, a person who, at the, what is that, our basic rate now of 12 CCF, would be paying $228.54 based on their table. That kind of rate increase is really, I don't know how they can justify that. And I don't see why the residents of Spring Valley should be captive of somebody not staying on top of what, what should have been tracked along, sorry, along the way. I don't, I haven't spoken to anybody in our valley that is opposed to wait, rate increases. We understand that. But the level of rate increase, we feel, is really obscene.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Edward Smith. I am a resident from 2006. I'm also on the, our board. I'm Chair of the Finance and Planning. What I wanted to bring up today was, we're having this Proposition 218 because we requested it. Special districts didn't request it, we did. The, we have been reviewing and making sure that water has been paying for water for the last 11, 12 years. And during those times, every year until the last three or four years, we have gotten to within $10,000 of the revenue paying for the expense. Now, all of a sudden, in three to four years, we have this, these major increases. During that same time, we have a delay and, in our reports. Our reports that we get, they come, they come late, and also, we are, they change. I mean, if you, for example, right now, we don't have year-end yet. And last year, we didn't get year-end until November, December. So we don't get the information. And so, we, we, it's us who have requested the 218. We are interested in paying for our water with water. So we asked special districts to review that, to make sure that we do need, or we weren't going to have 218. We asked for it. So special district says that they can't do it because they don't have enough time. And it's been that way for years. They don't have enough time, so we are trying to do it. That's why we want the numbers. And the, what happens is that we, we ended up having, paying for someone to help us with that. Well, when they requested the numbers, they got them from special districts. We want, we want to find out how these costs increased, and the, and why we're getting a 250 to 300% increase over approximately a four-year period of time. The other items that have come up, we also agree with, and I don't know anybody in Spring Valley who agrees with this. I have heard nobody say, "This is okay." Everybody that we've talked to is protesting. I don't know whether they have sent them in or not, but we don't like this. We feel that we can do better, and we want to do better. We want a, an increase. We want to support our water paying for water. However, we do not want this jammed down our throats.
And your, your three minutes are up. If you can finish your comment, please.
What we would like to do is work with the Board of Supervisors, yourself, our supervisor, and with special districts, and with the consultant, to come up with something that is much more reasonable and deals with the complaints that we have, not gloss them over. And remember, this is our project. We wanted it. We are very much interested in making this happen. We're not dragging our feet. We, we very much want it, and that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your concerns and letting us speak to tell our story.
Thank you.
And so I just want to state that I agreed with Chair Sabatier to allow the two folks, Helen and Ed, to speak, because they're the Finance Committee Chair and the Chair of the ad hoc, so.
I appreciate that, yes.
Hello, my name is Joe Wells. I'm a resident of Spring Valley for 36 years. I, past 17 years, I put in about $500 on our green belt through the campground committee. I do trash and vegetation management during the burn season. I'm a maximum water user, and I grew up and cut flowers. I do zinnias, carnations, I have the best tomatoes in Spring Valley, I assure you, and zucchini. But this will hurt me, you know, I'm, what do you say, income? I, I don't have too much. I have fixed income, and other people I know, this will hurt them very much, to the point they can't afford to, you know, have a little garden, irrigate. I grow trees, put them in the campground. I wouldn't be able to water them, you know. It's not so much the, the 1,200 cubic feet going down to four, that would kill me. You know, it, it just, it's too much of a cut. Being involved in our green belt, I assure you, at the maximum marijuana growing situation we had in Lake County, I had fish and wildlife out there. People were stealing water out of the creek. They were hooking up to the faucets in the campground, stealing water. And it's not so much of a big deal for the people who don't use the campground. But I'm the only one down there. And some of these people, they're not really nice people, you know, and I'm confronting them. Helen Mitchum, she's confronting them, you know. And if you cut their water back, they're getting it somewhere else. And we're the two people that are going to have to deal with that. And that will happen. Thank you very much, and have a nice afternoon.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Hello. I've been working on this for about a month since we got it. I'm just going to give you guys some key points. I gave some stuff that was emailed to you guys. So first off, special district says property owners are the only ones that can do the protest spread out around the valley. If you go into the Prop 218, it states, "Property owners or ratepayers." I have looked at the 2018, 19 financials to the 22, 23 financials. I did email that to you guys, and it shows profit every single year. They're stating that they want to use our property taxes for the roads. I've lived in Spring Valley for 20 years. They have not touched our roads in 20 years. So I'm okay if they're using our property taxes for something that goes to our valley. I've argued with PG&E. We've argued back and forth with special districts, just with POMO Trail. PG&E is having a problem with wanting to repave roads because the roads are in such bad condition, because special districts do not maintain our roads. If you look at Table 6, page 12 from the study, it shows a 3% increase on each admin overhead staffing, professional services, maintenance, chemicals, and utilities, and that's 3% on each one of those. So that is a 24% increase every single year for this. And then, if you just add for the 23, 24 that's in the study, just with the admin overhead staffing, professional services, we are paying $226,000 to employees. So, and we only have 410 customers. Table 3, page 7, shows in two years, we've actually lost 18 customers, so we're down from what it was. On page 8 of the study, Table 4 shows what the average house uses in Spring Valley. And in the summertime, we are using 13 cubic feet for an average household, and in the winter, it is nine cubic feet. So dropping this down to four cubic feet or the four CCFs. So, dropping this down to four cubic feet or the four CCFs, nobody's going to be able to even take care of themselves as one person. Just in 2014, the worst drought, the state of California's Health Department stated that people can use up to 55 gallons a day. One person uses 55 gallons a day, multiply that by 30, you're already over two CCFs in that one month. So, in two months, if one person's going to go over the four CCs. Special Districts does have a cash account. I did turn it in. Our cash account has $936,827.87 sitting in it. We've asked where the deficit is. If you look through the rate study, they have their numbers, but it doesn't show the deficit. There's no deficit. So, that's my question with Special Districts. And also, another thing I would like to bring up is in the last moratorium, when it, before it went up to the 26,000, a lot of people bought in because they already knew that it was going to go up, so it'd be cheaper for them to buy in now. And if they are not using, as what I was just told earlier this morning, is if the customer is actually not using it into the house, that their protest letter wasn't going to count. I just want to make sure that every property owner in the subdivision has a chance to have their voice heard. Not only if they do pay the 20, what'd you say, 26,000 or 28,000 to hook up the meter, they're going to be discouraged to even buy the meter because of the cost of the water. So, they're just end up selling it, and the development of Spring Valley is not going to be there. Table 3 of Kelseyville Study, Page 7, by the end of their five-year rate, they will only be paying $114.38, and that includes their 18 CCFs. That's for 1,100 customers, and those are resident customers. That's not including the ag, the businesses. And if you look at our rate study, they're going to drop it to 153.43 for four cubic feet, and we are less than half of those customers. Is that my three minutes? Was that the dot? Okay, thank you.
Good timing, thank you. Who else wishes to speak on this item? Please come on up. I have no hands in Zoom, so I'm looking at the chamber. Almost, almost. You'll get a chance.
Peggy O'Dea, I've been in Spring Valley since 1991. I'm against the water rate increase, and I'm particularly against lowering our baseline from 12 to 4. With a household of two, two dogs, one cat, when I was speaking to Robin, she mentioned, "Oh, you use 72,000 cubic feet a year." That's 6,000. So, lowering it to four is absolutely unacceptable. I don't even understand why you would have the audacity to bring that to us. It's, it's, it's completely wrong, and I haven't spoke to anybody in Spring Valley that drinks their water without a filter. We buy bottles of water, we use filters. Not one of you have ever mentioned the quality of our water, but you're ready to take the money. I don't like that. I don't like that at all. I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Scott Rankis. I live at 1,800 New Long Valley Road in Spring Valley. I have currently moved there three years ago. I paid my $24,000 to the expansion fee in the hopes of creating a vision for our property in that community. I'm opposed to the Prop 218 and the proposed current rate increase, which is a 2/3 reduction in our water base rate that I've invested in, in our, our community. There's been no rate increase since 2011. I'm curious as to why yearly incremental increases based on operation deficit levels are not looked at. Since 2011, I don't believe there's been any rate increase, correct? So, therefore, yearly, why are we not looking at a yearly small substantial increase, and why the push to the five years instantly? I feel that that's rushed and incorrect data. I would also like to address, more time is accurately needed to research what the actual operation deficit is and how many years we've operated at a loss. We did our research as homeowners, investing in a community prior to moving there into Spring Valley, with the understanding that we would have X number of gallons available to us at a rate that was charged to us. I have no problems paying for water. We don't have a water supply issue, we have a finance issue in front of us, and the operating costs, and what that looks like. Letters were sent out to mailing addresses and not physical addresses. If I'm wrong, please correct me. We could possibly discuss a separate ag water supply versus treated water for ag. We're looking at a secondary water source for the valley. Why not let that be used for ag and then possibly regulate that to also increase income in the valley for water usage rates, so that we're not using, as he said, treated water for ag uses? The current average CCF usage in the state of California, based upon five different websites, states that 12,000 CCF is the average use for a household. And that number alone, I feel that reducing our water rate to the four CCF substantially impacts not only currently the customers that are in that valley and their water use that they do pay for. It's not a matter of paying for the water. It's the amount of water that we're going to have and the ability to use it like anyone else that invests in their community. I agree, we can all do better, and we have an amazing opportunity to shine as a state, a county, and a community, working together to try and figure out how to make this happen. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Please come on up.
Okay, so, talking about the Prop 218, so when the notice came out, we were supposed to, it says it's supposed to clearly demonstrate the basis on which these fees are calculated. And, and I've heard in the presentation that this information is readily available. The problem is, is we don't live where things are readily available. So, there's a miscommunication on pretty much all this going on, and the fact that they're going to, you know, push this on us is kind of just, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't feel right. Another thing I wanted to, on the Prop 218, was the, the 40% use more water for residential s, meaning like the, like the property owners. So, so there's 40% of people that are using excess water use, apparently. So, why aren't we seeing these numbers? And then, and I'm hearing flip flops on whether it's just residential use or if lots can have used water that don't have residents on them. And if that's the case, and why, and if there is an agreement, then why aren't somebody's, nobody's enforcing these rules and regulations from Special District's side? Yeah, and then, so yeah, so it's basically Prop 218. So, back to the voting, because of Prop 218, because they didn't inform us, we should not be here today for a vote. This should be postponed, and, you know, back to the drawing board. Back, but when we go back to the drawing board, like, this is just wasted taxpayers' money to do this proposal when they didn't even do it right in the first place. And I guess that's, I'm going to stop there.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rankis, and I'm the owner of the Land of Goats and Honey, which is over 200,000 square feet and zoned SR. When we were looking for properties to find a place where we could grow and thrive, I understand that money is needed to grow, which is why the Capacity Expansion Fund is what it is, and we paid that. My understanding is that the zoning policies would allow me to thrive on my property. With the current proposed reduction in base water usage, this will drastically reduce the proper use of our property, as it does not allow for higher densities. The zoning regulations state, "To provide for large lot residential areas where establishment of appropriate infrastructure such as public water, sewer, and county maintained roads will ultimately support higher densities." The following regulations shall apply to all SR districts. I'm not going to list all the densities, but what this looks like is it looks like my house being built. It looks like two Scottish Highland cows, looks like two donkeys, two pigs, a healthy herd of goats, ducks, and chickens, and rabbits for food, a couple hives of bees, a vast garden with a farm stand to support our community, and additional housing by building ADUs on the side acre, not to mention the guardian dogs that are needed to protect my entire farm. As stated, all districts are different and should not be treated the same. While not all properties in Spring Valley are the same, and they should not be treated the same also. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Please come on up.
Hello, my name is Lisa Sherrill, and I am a longtime resident of Spring Valley. In order to begin with, we need 51% of the property owners and the ratepayers to submit a letter of protest. In essence, no response at all counts as a vote in favor of this rate increase. We have heard from several seniors who didn't understand the notice and threw it away. We wonder how many property owners may have ignored this notice, didn't understand the ramifications of the notice, or did not even receive it. For example, my husband and I own four parcels in Spring Valley. We received one mailing of the proposed water rate height at our home address. We received two others a few weeks later. They had been sent to the physical address of the vacant lots, not the billing address. They were reset late, labeled by hand from Special Districts. Another one of our properties never received a notice. How many other people did this happen to? PG&E, I'm not going to go over what everyone else had says, had said here before, but I agree with them on the rate increase. The 255% increase after the five years is outrageous. PG&E has been working in Spring Valley installing underground lines. We have heard about broken water lines and water leaks. In some instances, thousands of gallons of water have been lost, almost draining the water tanks. Some of those were unmarked water lines, which had, which then had to be replaced by Special Districts because they were unmarked by Special Districts. So, where is the blueprint for our area? Why, why is PG&E digging and then breaking water lines, and then we, as consumers, are having to probably pay for the expense of repairing all those water lines and paying for all the gallons of water lost? There seems to be a lot of waste by Special District staff. When our street was under construction this year, some days, we would have a Special District worker parked on our street for eight hours a day, just sitting in his truck with his air conditioner on. Another day, I mean, and these are things that I witnessed, another day, three workers were on our street, and I walked out to the curb, and I asked them what they were doing, and they responded, "Looking for water meters." They asked me if I knew where my neighbor's water meter was. Does it take three company employees to find a water meter? And I, I had a water leak last year on my vacant lot next door to my home, and they gave the notice to my neighbor. So, these are just a few of the examples of waste and inefficiency within Special District. And I have heard so many stories from just speaking to people over the past couple months with this proposal. So, we are not opposed to the rate increase, but this proposed rate increase is extreme and would create a hardship for most people in Spring Valley. As Special District's boss, I'm appealing to you to reconsider this proposal. A more gradual, realistic increase would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Virginia Keeker. I've been in Spring Valley for five years. I live on Cache Creek Road, and a few months ago, when PG&E was on our road, they broke the water line eight times, eight times. We had notices to boil our water. So, for a month and a half, we were boiling water. I would call into Special Districts and ask for leniency or give us a week or two of water because we had to boil so much water, we had to go to the store and get water. And a lot of the people in our community are like me, we're seniors, we have, we live on fixed incomes. We can't afford a drastic increase in water like they're proposing. And I know there are a majority of people in Spring Valley that are seniors and are on fixed incomes. This is going to hurt a lot of people tremendously. And just on our block alone, eight water leaks in three weeks or four weeks was crazy. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dan Ori. I live out in Spring Valley on Pomont Trail. I just did a little investigation on, the same company did the Kelseyville appraised thing that they were doing. In their statement, it says that the average single home uses 18 CCF, or CCF, every two months. We're at 12, they want to cut ours to four. If they, and it's the same company that did ours as they did theirs. Why are they telling Kelseyville, "Yeah, you guys, at average, a single dwelling home uses 18, cut ours from 12 to four"? Doesn't make any sense. I don't care what she says about, "Oh, well, during the winter, this is that, or this is that." That's, doesn't matter. It's at 12, leave it at 12. They're saying that the rate's going to be $77 for every two months. It ain't going to be $77. It's going to be a heck of a lot more than $77 when you add the usage from 12 CCF to, 4 CCF to 12, when they drop it. It's, the bill's going to be over $100 easily for most customers. I use a lot of water, and I pay for it. My last water bill was 200 bucks. But you try to keep stuff green. We're in a fire area out there. So, you know, people keep stuff green. You just can't cut everything down, and it looks like you're living in a desert. So, and another thing about the Kelseyville deal, they're saying the chemicals in Kelseyville for over, for 1,100 customers is around $22,000 a year. On ours, for 400 customers, ours is $20,000 a year for chemicals. And they're saying, "Well, the water's better over in Kelseyville than it is at the lake." No, believe me. They're pumping out of the same lake that they're getting ours from because they're, they're pumping out of wells. The wells are the same. It might leach a little better than ours, but for 1,100 customers, it's $22,000 a year for chemicals, and ours is 20 for 400? No way. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other comments on this item? I see no hands in the Zoom room, and it looks like we're done here in the chamber, and I'm going to bring it back, and Supervisor Paeska.
I have a question, Robin, just for clarification, because of the PG&E undergrounding that's happening all over the county and old water systems, they do pay for those repairs, don't they, when they break those lines?
Yes, they, they, they're working with us to repair them all, and so, they're, they're responsible to backfill and repair and all of that stuff. And they're working on the roads out there as well, and that's per their encroachment permit, and that's been the delay they wanted Special Districts to pay. And we pushed back and said, "Your encroachment permit says no, you will put it back to the way it was or better." And so, now they are moving forward with repairing the roads.
Okay, thanks.
Takes a little coercion a little bit sometimes.
They signed it.
Any other comments? I want to bring it back to Director Bore. You are requesting for a continuation of this public hearing to ensure that we can document the protest appropriately based on address or APN numbers, one vote per parcel. Is that still correct, and that is your request?
Yes, that is our request. We have quite the pile of them, and we're close to that 250 mark, so we need to move into the validation phase. And there isn't time here today to do that.
And at this point, if I'm correct, just, we talked about it earlier, the continuation of this public hearing also extends the deadline for a public protest from property owners in that district. Okay? Yes. And so, at this point, looking for consensus, I guess a motion from the board would probably be best.
What's the new deadline?
What kind of time do you need?
We would come back to the 17th board meeting.
Okay.
But what's the deadline for the protests?
The deadlines for those protests would be when we continue the hearing on the 17th.
Until this month, okay.
And so, can we get a time certain so that we can go ahead and add that in our motion? Is that possible? Is that possible, Johanna?
They're saying next week.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is ridiculous. She's not a public comment.
Wait, 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 wait. We closed public comment. If there's conversations that need to be had after the fact. Right now, we're looking at continuing this public protest. We've received a lot of protest documentation. We'll need to validate those. It also extends the public protest timeline, which means you can still submit your protest until next week, when we will continue the public hearing and finalize, hopefully finalize, the public hearing. I'm looking for a certain, a date, a time certain from Johanna.
Probably in the afternoon, to be safe, maybe 1:30.
OK, if that's available.
On what date?
Hold on, hold on.
September 17, at 1:30.
And Chair, before we get that far, I have a technical question.
OK. And just checking in with Vice Chair.
Yeah, I wanted to see if we could extend it to the 24th, and the reason I say that is because we will be posting Thursday the agenda, so, you know, we won't really know a lot of the details. I don't know. I mean, would you have a lot of the count and whatnot in place, or?
I have that my question.
Yeah, so, I mean, I still would like to see the 24th if possible, but, I mean, it's the will of the board.
OK, let's see what the board wishes to do, and let's move on to Supervisor Green. I'm open for whatever date is going to be the right date to make sure we're done with our process.
All right. Before we even get to the matter of the continuation, should we come back at some date in the future, and there's a successful protest? Can you explain the process? That would take out, basically, the board's ability to act on the current proposal, but it would not permanently prohibit Special Districts or this board from considering other proposals. Is that correct? What's the end game? What's the end game of a successful protest vote? And is there anything that would preclude this board from taking notice today of substantial controversy and maybe resetting the clock and directing staff to bring back another proposal at some time in the future? So two possible paths. One would be continue that, see what happens with the protest, and then roll the dice on that. The other would be, everyone's here today, and we could take action to, basically, nuke this proposal and reboot and come back with another proposal and other.
I'm going to interrupt before you respond. I appreciate the thought, but I think until we know what the protest vote looks like, please be prepared to respond to that kind of question for next time. But until we know, let's, let's not map out what the next steps are at this moment in time. I think we have to deal with what we have in front of us. So the nuke option, I don't think, is one that should be taken without better understanding of what's really in front of us. I don't see any further pens up, but I do want to check in with Vice Chair Crandall if that's the appropriate direction, based on what Supervisor Green just said.
I mean.
Just waiting till we know what the protest vote looks like, coming back, and then, once we know, looking at what options are in front of us, rather than making kind of a map right now.
I'm confused. Anything that he just proposed, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at what they asked for was like a extension.
Yeah.
To count and then come back and look from there.
OK. And that's, that's kind of what I'm offering.
That's what we're looking for, yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
So I'm good with the 24th, and it sounds like 1:30, so that's one thing. But I had a, I had a clarification question, because I heard something today in public comment. So is it, is it true that we didn't initiate this process? The Spring Valley Advisory Committee or Financial Committee asked for this? Is that true? Because I heard that in public comment.
Speak in the microphone.
I just, I just want, for my own clarification, I want to know who started this process, and it was, a comment was made today that they asked for this.
Yes, so they requested the 2-8. We were looking at doing rate increases after doing Middletown, and after some evaluation, we agreed that we should look into Spring Valley.
But it was initiated by them.
A request.
It was requested by them and thereby.
We initiated, because.
I just wanted, for my own thoughts on this, is clarify that.
And a quick clarification, we just offered potentially the 24th. There's two folks that have said yes. Is 1:30 available on the 24th? Yeah, I want to make sure that we're offering something that works. 2 o'clock? OK, so 1:30 on the 17th or 2 o'clock on the 24th is what is available at this moment in time, correct? OK. I'm fine with the 24th as well, just to make sure, again, that we're clear and we've done our part, and we're not rushing through the process either, because some things might be easier to read than others, and we want to make sure that we're getting everything
Well, I just have another question about some of the concerns that were raised today. Are you going to take the next two weeks to meet again with the advisory group? Or is it just to review the protests?
Well, the amount of time that we spend with the advisory group, it's probably highly likely that we will meet with them.
OK.
Assuming that Helen and, they want to meet with us. We won't be going to the next community meeting by then, but, you know, we will reach out to Helen and ask her if she, if they have additional concerns, so that we could meet with them. But we've talked about a lot of these, a lot of these are not surprises, besides the comparison between the two different districts and why one has a high use and the other one doesn't. It's all based on averages. And so currently, they use a lot more water in Kelseyville, so their average is higher versus the average that's in Spring Valley.
OK.
And before we take action, I just want to thank Director Bore. I know this is not a process you were involved in when it was initiated. You kind of walked in in the middle of it. Last time we met with Allison, it was with Director Harder, sitting next to her. Appreciate you jumping in and bringing this to the board. Looking forward to how your fresh set of eyes see what's going on in this county and the districts, and seeing how it is that we need to move forward best to support our systems and infrastructure. So again, thank you for jumping into this and taking it partway through. Looking for action for continuation, and it looks like it was September 24 at 2 PM.
So I'll move to continue this item of the public hearing. Do I have to say the whole thing? Let me just read it all off right here, or just time, date, and time certain?
Just be the, as you stated it, move, motion to continue this, the public hearing for this item to, was it September 24?
September 24 at 2 o'clock PM. PM. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.